A few of our members here, we've got enough to make it a quorum, so I will call to order the meeting of Meramec Planning Board for January 17th, 2017. Let me remind everyone who's going to address the board to sign in on the clipboard and make sure you speak into the microphone clearly, make sure it's turned on. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting is February 7th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton room. Before we begin conducting any business, I will appoint Nelson to be in a voting position, so that we've got five members here, which is more than a quorum. And with that, let's move to the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Jillian.
I don't have a report tonight.
Any questions by members of the board for staff? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda, and I want to rearrange items three and four because I expect the deliberations on three is going to be a lot longer than four. We may be able to get these guys out of here a little early. So with that, item number four is Buckley Abbott LLC is the applicant and owner and its review for consideration and final approval for a waiver of full site plan review for a proposed commercial kitchen addition, the parcels located at 436 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 general commercial, aquifer conservation elderly and town center overlay districts, tax map 5D4, lot 7. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Yep. A waiver of full site plan review is being sought as the proposed addition will add less than 500 square feet of new impervious surface area, and it's not considered a significant change to the property. The applicant did receive setback variances for the addition in November of 2016. A shoreland impact permit was recently approved by NHDES, and they have also proposed a stone recharge drip edge trench alongside the new addition to offset any increase in runoff. So I'll let them explain a little bit more, but it's a fairly minor addition that they're proposing.
Thank you, Jillian. I was caught by that, too. I thought it was a very, very minor addition, but at the same time, it's got the attention of the zoning board and DES and everybody else, and that sort of spoke to me and made me think, let's have a look at it here, too. Please, when you get a second, when you're ready, introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Certainly. Is that going to be the best place to set this up?
Yeah, that is. That's the best place for it.
My name is Spencer Tatum with Meridian Land Services. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Mike Buckley, Buckley Abbott LLC, to present a proposal to construct an addition off the south end of the existing Buckley's Bakery and Cafe at 436 Daniel Webster Highway, map 5D4, lot 7. Everyone saw the application. As mentioned, there were two variances received, one for rear lot line encroachment and also wetland setback encroachment, and those were both granted at the last meeting. As also mentioned, the site is partially within the 250-foot shoreline protection zone, so an NHDES shoreline permit application was submitted and approved for impacts and increase in impervious area within the 250-foot zone of the South Heagan. The southern of butter is the town fire department, main fire station. To the west, it's the Meramec School District, it's actually the site of a former pond. It was a pond until they breached the dam over the South Heagan or through the South Heagan, and it's since drained out and succeeded into an emergent wetland. To the north is Buckley's Great Stakes, and I believe this Parks and Rec over here. The property is mostly built out. It was first developed 1820, according to town records, old building. There's parking on the north and east side, and then it slopes off directly into the wetland Proposed on the south side of the building is a 14-by-39-foot kitchen addition only. There's no increase in eating space. It's simply to house basically larger kitchen apparatus, namely a walk-in refrigerator and a standing full rack oven, so that Mr. Buckley can have more inventory, because during busy times of the year, he actually sells out, and it's not the fullest use of the business. There is a 4% increase, 496 square feet impervious area. Part of that proposal is a stone drip edge that will infiltrate the 25-year storm event from both the proposed addition and a portion of the existing structure. So we'll actually be treating more storm water than the current conditions. The proposal does not intend to impact the 25-foot wetland buffer, and there's no other proposed improvements to the parcel in this application. Surface runoff during construction will be treated with a core fiber log or silt sock. It will surround the proposed improvements. This exceeds both the Meramec Site Plan requirements and the state shoreline permit So approval of the application will not expand or alter the nature of the business. There will be no increase in customers. They will be serviced at any given time. Approval of the application will allow the cafe and bakery to generate more inventory, which is needed for the success of the business. In the memorandum that went around, the applicant is amenable to all those recommendations and conditions of the approval, as outlined. So without further ado, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Are there any questions by members of the board before we take up the question of accepting the application as complete?
I have questions, but they could wait if you wanted to accept for review.
Would you like to make a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the plan for review.
Is there a second? Motion and second to accept the application as complete. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to accept the application as complete. The applicant's requested a waiver of full site plan review for this small addition. Does the board have any questions before it takes up that question?
No. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant a waiver of full site... Sorry, sorry. We make a waiver of full site plan review on the basis that strict conformity would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and it's not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Desiree has a second for that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to waive full site plan review. Nelson, want to field your questions now?
Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, I wasn't clear on the back property line, where that is from the drawing I got.
Okay. Yeah, there's two kind of line types going on. Rear property line is actually the former edge of the pond. Of course, the pond is no longer there, but the lot line remains where it was, apparently. That's the survey law.
Okay. Should that not show on here? It just, you know, for the future, it would be interesting, I think, to know where the boundary is between you and the school property.
Yeah. It is displayed, but of course, you can't define it by meets and bounds because it's pond edge.
How is it displayed? It doesn't seem to be on my map.
It's a bold dashed line with a long, probably inch, inch and a half.
Okay, I see the bold dashed line, but the other lines are solid, so it doesn't appear right away that that's the property line, and nor does it quite follow the contours, which I would expect the edge of the pond to do.
You would hope it would, right. The reference plan depicted it like this, and we, our topographic detail is probably a little bit more granular, which is why it showed up a little bit better than the reference plan and why it doesn't, why it does cross contours.
Is there something on this note or something that defines what that is? I see it says approximate edge of the pond, of the pond, prior to dam removal.
It is a little bit confusing when you look at the legend, because there's a call-out for a solid line that's a property line and then a dashed line that's an abutting lot line, which I assume is also a property line. But that thing that's moving along the edge of the pond isn't on any of the items in the legend.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But it doesn't follow the contours.
Do you have any thoughts on what we can do to define that a little bit better?
We could probably label that a little bit better for everybody.
Ultimately, I don't think that the school district has any deep concerns about the exact location of the lot line. It may be necessary that somebody have some kind of a lot line agreement or a boundary line agreement that's developed between the two, rather than going to the expense of trying to survey where the pond edge used to be and how do you describe it?
And for all intents and purposes, this is still a very, very wet land, so there's not really any development potential here at all. The school is leave a couple of hundred feet.
Yeah, no question at all.
So it's, yeah, I mean, it could be defined better, but...
I would like a note to clarify that that's the property line. Okay. And that should take care of that, Mr. Chairman. The other question I had was on the addition that's going on to the building, the roof slope, is that a flat-roofed addition or is it sloped? Is it...
It'll have to be sloped at least some amount to get it to the stone drip edge. It'll be pitched so that all the runoff...
But it's not pitched at the same rate that the present building is?
Probably not, no. It'll be, it'll be less of a pitch, probably 312 or 412.
Yeah, okay. It's not flat.
Can't be flat. It needs to be pitched so the water gets to the drip edge.
Okay, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else have questions of the applicant? If not, let's open it up and see if any butters or citizens wish to weigh in and offer the board any information. Seeing nobody coming forward, we could close that public hearing. Is there any general discussion about the application and if the applicant's looking for us to approve?
Could I just check, Mr. Chairman, that the applicant has read all the general and subsequent conditions? You have read them and you understand them and you're happy with them.
Yeah, he mentioned in his presentation...
That's what I thought you did. I'd just like to be doubly sure.
That is correct.
Thank you so very much.
Okay. Vinnie?
One quick question. You said it's going to house a freezer or a cooler?
Microphone, sir.
Yeah, it's going to be a freezer.
It'll have a freezer or cooler, yes. My only question is, is the equipment for that will actually do the cooling? Is that going to be outside or inside the building?
What typically we do is we'll use a remote, so it'll be kind of like the one that's in the building now.
Yeah.
When we opened up, I knew that we didn't have enough refrigeration, but we just wanted to get open. It'll be an interior walk-in. I think it's going to be an eight-by-10 walk-in on the inside. It'll have a pack on the back wall.
So it's going to be on the back wall?
Condenser.
It's not going to be on the ground? It's going to be up in the air on the wall?
That hasn't actually been decided, but the way we did on the other side was, it was attached to the building, so it'll probably be that.
My only concern is if it's on the ground, that should be noted on the plan.
Yeah. I would be leaning towards putting it on the building like we did the other one. It works great.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions for me? I'd be happy to answer them.
Did he identify himself?
No, please do. I think you, Spencer identified you, but you didn't identify yourself when you started to speak.
Oh, sure. Mike Buckley, owner of Buckley's Bakery Cafe.
Very good. Thank you very much. Did you have a question, Tom, or was it just that?
I just, apparently, the Public Works Department had a request that they remove a parking space. I don't know if we want to talk about whether that should happen or not specifically, or just accept that because it's in there that it's going to happen, or even identify exactly which parking space they're talking about.
Yep. Jillian, what do we, what do we know about the request from Public Works? What are they after and what are they trying to do?
Perhaps Spencer could point to it right there, mostly in the right-of-way.
Jillian, your microphone's not on either.
I was just asking Spencer to point to the parking space that was referred to by the Public Works Department, which is mostly in the right-of-way.
Is that parking space, does removal of that parking space affect their parking calculation and whether they meet the standards?
It's my understanding that Swan's Chocolate had received a waiver for the parking when they were in there, and when Buckley's went in, there was no change of use determination. So they got what Swan's had under their approval.
Do we disturb that if we get rid of one of these spaces, though?
I would have to look and see what the calculation was, but it's possible.
I get why the Department of Public Works wouldn't want a parking space designated in the right-of-way in case they ever have to do any construction or that sort of thing, but I'm reluctant to take that kind of an action to disturb something that has existed for a long time and hasn't created any problems for anybody. So I don't know what other members of the board think.
That's kind of the way I feel. Doesn't seem to be a major issue there.
Yeah, why are we kicking the guy in the knees for nothing? Other thoughts?
I don't have any problem with that.
Is that one of the conditions in the...
It just says it should be eliminated, so it's hardly a condition. It's a comment.
It was a recommended condition that, you know, DPW comments be addressed, so it would have to be...
So as it's written now, they would have to address it unless we do something different in the way that comment is written?
Yeah.
I think if the applicant is understanding that his parking space is in the right-of-way and that there may be some implications for that if the road is ever widened or construction occurs, I don't see any reason to eliminate it on paper in advance of that. I mean, proceed at your own risk. That's my view.
In addition to which, Mr. Chairman, I find it hard to see, just looking at the layout, how that space actually interferes with the sight line for going up the road.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, it really is, it's not as though, I mean, sorry, I don't think you, the site coming up DW Highway is anywhere affected by that space being there.
Because of the curvature of the road, that's correct. I've made a point of observing that this week, and when you're coming out of Buckley's, you can see clearly to the north.
Yes. I don't think it has any relevance. I would propose, Mr. Chairman, that we delete the recommendation...
4C?
4C on the basis that we can't see where it is a problem.
Why don't we take the approach of, if we're at that point, considering approval of all of the conditions except for that one and sort of deal with it in the approval vote?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with grant approval for this particular project with the exception...
Subject to all the conditions.
Subject to all the conditions on the piece of paper presented by Jillian Harris dated January 11th, 2017, with the exception of item 4C, which we do not think is necessary.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
I'll second it with a condition that we add in a clarification of the rear property line.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
The notes, yeah.
So the motion is to approve the project subject to all the conditions in the memo except for the one regarding the parking place and plus a requirement that the rear property line be designated more clearly on the plan. Is that correct? Any discussion of that? Desiree?
Just one quick question. I don't believe we spoke about the architectural aesthetic, if you will, of the building, your addition. You're going to kind of keep it looking the same as the rest of the building, kind of blend it away.
Well, that part is behind the brick, so it'll be clapboard, well, vinyl clapboard, just like it is now, just bumped out.
Okay.
I won't be taking any of the historical brick look away, because it's past that point already.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure it was going to kind of sort of match. So, you know, obviously it doesn't need to be brick, but the rest of the...
The same thing is there now.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll just match it.
Good question. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 for approval. So you are approved subject to those conditions, and may I also say that your business is very popular in town. I've heard more people suggesting that we ought to approve your proposal than in almost anything that I've seen in the last year, with folks saying, oh, well, you got to get those guys taken care of, so.
It's been great support.
You've got a lot of people...
It's well appreciated, of course. I appreciate your extra considerations on the parking space. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you. With that, we will come back to our earlier agenda item, which was number three. The Monahan Companies is the applicant, Meramec Premium Outlets LLC is the owner. Continued review for consideration of final approval of a mixed-use development, conditional use permit proposing 388,520 square feet of development, including retail, hotel, conference center, restaurant, office, and multifamily residential uses. The parcels located at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard and the I-2 industrial aquifer conservation districts and wellhead protection area, tax map 3C, lot 191-2, and this item is continued from our December 6th, 2016, planning board meeting. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Since the applicant was last here on December 6th, we have not received any new submissions from the applicant, but we have received peer review comments from Arnett Development Group, which you should have received and are outlined in Tim's memo. Overall, Arnett has concurred that the fiscal impact of the proposal would be net positive, but staff has noted some recommended revisions, and I can either get into those now or sort of go through them as they come up while we're going over the criteria.
Have they been provided to the applicant, the recommended revisions?
They have with, yes, they have.
Very good. So let's let them come up in the discussion as they suit. Before you begin, let me thank you for the courtesy of rearranging the schedule like that to let those good folks move on quickly. And with that, as always, please introduce yourself.
I've been in that seat as well as this seat.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Gordon Leedy, and I am a landscape architect and senior planner with EHB for the applicant. As Jillian indicated...
I don't know if your microphone's on or close enough to you.
I'll move it closer. Is that better? I think so. As Jillian indicated, we did receive a series of peer review comments from Mr. Arnett, and there were... The long and the short of it is that it's no big deal to make the changes that he suggested. I kind of took a back-of-the-envelope, hold on just a second. Kind of took a back-of-the-envelope approach to the suggestions, and they boiled down to a couple of kind of clerical changes that need to be made, but also, when we prepared this report, the 2016 tax rate wasn't available, so, and as you might know, that rate went down because of the revaluation. So there was a question about whether, using the assessed valuations that we had developed, you know, what the, what the number was. And just for your recollection, within the, within the brief report that we provided to the town, we had a total net positive fiscal impact of approximately $600,000 on about $1,48,600 per year in revenue. So a total cost of about $446,000 roughly. So if you use the new rate of 1940 total, it's $5, and I can't remember exactly what the breakdown is. Tim gave it to me. $491 for the town and $1449 for the school. You come up with 1940 total, run that through on the 49, 885, 430 valuation, total valuation for the project, and you come up with a net income, instead of a million and change, it goes down to 967,769, still being positive by over half a million dollars, $521,000. That would be per year, every year. So then there was another question that Mr. Arnett raised, and that was that there is, I, when I prepared the fiscal impact study, I used a kind of national data set for, to look at school-aged children, generation, if you will, from apartments. And Mr. Arnett questioned whether we should instead be using numbers that were generated by the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority that were surveyed out of, out of New Hampshire projects. So, and what Tim said in his memo, which I think is completely reasonable, is that that data set was based primarily on two-bedroom units that were, you know, scattered throughout New Hampshire. It would be perhaps appropriate to use that two-bedroom unit, school-aged child generation number, which is actually .17 child per unit, for the two-bedroom units, since that's the same kind of data set that was, was developed by New Hampshire Housing Finance. But for the, for the one-bedroom and the studio apartments that we're including, the national numbers seem to make more sense, which is like .04 for a one-bedroom and essentially zero for a, for a studio. And you can imagine that, you know, these are being marketed to younger folks. If you have a studio apartment, you know, and you're a young professional, you're, and you're having a child, especially a school-aged child, you're going to be like moving on from that situation prior to that occurring. So that, that kind of makes sense, in my opinion, and we agree with, with Tim's methodology. He did a quick recalculation, which differs somewhat from my quick recalculation. He came up with 13 school-aged children. I actually came up with 16 school-aged children. So if you take the cost numbers of, you know, cost per pupil of about, almost $15,000, multiply that out, it's about $76,000 a year higher than the number that I had, I had initially used. So that still means that the project would be, you know, using the new tax rate, using the higher school-aged children generation number, the project would still be about $445,000 per year positive from a fiscal perspective. There were some other questions that came up in Mr. Arnett's report regarding phasing and assuring that, you know, should the board believe it's appropriate using a kind of phase-by-phase analysis and assuring that, you know, it remains positive through the phases. I did a quick analysis based on what we believe the first phase would be, and it still is modestly positive. So in a worst-case scenario, it would be modestly positive. In a best-case scenario, it would be significantly positive from a fiscal impact perspective. So, so that was, that's the fiscal impact. There was some discussion about, about, about phasing. We, I believe, said at the last meeting that the office use was, the larger office building was likely to be in a, in a, in a future phase, so first phase would be kind of everything else, and in, in this case, maybe I can have a pointer. In this case, this building here is a larger office building with some ground floor retail, and there's a parking garage associated with it. We provided, as a part of the application package, a phasing plan that showed a first phase that was essentially everything here without this building and without the parking garage and utilizing surface parking. So when that building, when, when a tenant shows up that is interested in that building, then, you know, then it would be considered for construction, but not before then. The other issue is that while we're... The other issue is that while we're talking to... Or while Mr. Monahan is talking to potential operators for the hotel, there isn't anybody tied down right now. So that would likely be in perhaps a Phase 1A-type situation. So what we're looking at for potential phasing would be the apartment units, which would likely be built over some period of time, not, you know, 190 units all at once, but the apartment units and then the retail and professional office space that would be associated with these other buildings in a Phase 1A. And then the conference center and hotel use would be in perhaps a Phase 1B, and then the office space would be in a second phase at a later date. So if you look at that Phase 1A, which would be essentially 30,000 square feet plus or minus of retail and restaurant use, 192 units of apartments, and 30,000 square feet of professional office space, that's what is modestly positive from a fiscal impact perspective. So it would have less traffic than the ultimate development, so there shouldn't be much concern there. But it would still provide the backbone of a mixed-use project and in this kind of configuration and would be fiscally positive. So that's kind of that.
Can I ask you some questions about the phasing bit?
Absolutely.
So 1A is essentially the apartment buildings. Is there any retail?
And retail would be the apartment buildings and the retail and professional office space in those two buildings.
Okay. So it is mixed-use right from that first phase. Is there a reason to label it 1A, 1B, and 2 instead of 1, 2, and 3?
No. I mean, we could call it whatever we want, actually. We have the power to do that.
Okay. I didn't know if there was some reason to construct them as kind of two parts of one and then a second.
Well, I mean, I guess I was just considering it that way because clearly, you know, the office space and the parking garage are in a future phase. And depending on if the hotel operator, you know, if Mr. Monahan comes to an agreement with a hotel operator immediately, then that, you know, might move up in the schedule. But right now, that's not there. So that's why I'm sort of separating it.
I think the only thing that I would add to that discussion is just some clarification that whether it's Phase 2 or Phase 3, the office building and the parking garage are tied together and that the office doesn't come into existence without its necessary parking.
That's absolutely correct. And, I mean... And speaking of parking, I mean, I know there were some questions. I've reviewed this with Tim. We, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we used a shared parking methodology that has been developed by Urban Land Institute and vetted over the last almost 30 years. Well, I mean, probably exactly 30 years. I think it came into existence in 1987. And it basically takes surveyed parking generation. So they survey a number of, you know, pick a use, theaters or office space or residential space or, you know, any... They have a number of different uses. So they have a trip or a parking generation number for each one of those uses by season, so by month, and by time of day. So you create a spreadsheet, which, if I'm lucky, I can show you. So this is...
Yeah, that's clear. I got that.
You know, you really need a microscope to look at this, or you need to look at it on screen. But basically, for every use, and this column here is office, there's 83,720 square feet, it generates at 3.0 per thousand. And then there's a time of day for every hour of the day that has a utilization for both weekday and Saturday. And then, to even more complicate things, you have an employee parking demand and you have visitor parking demand. So you have all of these numbers, and these are all from actual projects, actual surveyed, you know, data sets for each kind of use. And you simply do the math, and you add it up across, and the highest number is how many parking spaces you need to provide. So if you go over, you know, we have all of these different uses, and you go over, and the highest number, as it turns out, is like noon time on a weekday where we need to provide 960 parking spaces.
Do you build in a margin of error?
Well, what we have on the plan is about 1,000 and change, 1,080 or something like that.
Okay.
So there is a margin of error. I guess it's a little bit... What they say is that that's the number. What I've always been told is that if there's a parking demand number that you're talking about, you really need to provide about 10% more spaces so that you have... So that every parking space isn't full. You know, you don't have people circulating all over the place and looking for parking spaces. So unless, you know, of course, they come up with something like they have at the airport where they say, "All right, your parking space is over here." You know, they actually have sensors now that will tell you where there are open parking spaces, but we're not going there. So 960, if you provide, you know, 1,100 or 1,050, you're probably in pretty good shape. And that's, as I said, you know, it's a seasonality thing. So actually, in the, I believe this is winter... Oh, no, this is summer. In the summer, the numbers are significantly lower. So that was what we saw before. The 960 number is kind of a Christmas number, and the more normal daily demand is more like 670. So I'm quite confident that if at full build-out, we have the program that we have discussed, the parking that we're showing on the plan is more than enough. And we can fine-tune this as the program for development becomes a little clearer. I mean, we're going to have some flux in some of those uses as we get tenants and their actual buildings are developed and so forth. All of these numbers need to correspond to what the actual numbers that are constructed are, and, you know, that'll be part of our discussions at site plan. But we have the ability to accommodate, I think, just about any eventuality that we can see going forward.
Thank you for going into some detail on that and going through the spreadsheet. Each time that you've come, you've kind of described this methodology in detail, in a little bit more detail each time. I think that as a board, we've expressed some support for the concept, and my support for it personally is getting stronger the more that I know about it for a lot of reasons. I am opposed to developing too much parking and then paving the world, and we've got all this that's out there, impermeable surfaces and all of those issues. And I think that also throughout our master plan for the town, we've talked more about compact development and redevelopment of areas, and us getting a good understanding of how to apply this methodology to some of our projects is going to be more and more important for us. And so to have a development that actually puts it to use so that we can... It'll work as it planned, but it'll also give us a sense of how that model works as we apply it going forward. So I'm glad to see it. I think it's a great idea, much, much better than to say we need all of the parking for every one of these uses, just all added up and stacked on top of each other, and that produces an extra 100, 200, 300, 400 spaces.
It's like 300 or 400 spaces for this program.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if you really want to, of course, it is in actually the appendix four in their original proposal. You can actually go through and understand exactly how it's all worked out. It's quite interesting.
I agree with that. I agree with that. So thank you for going through that. I don't know if anybody else has questions about the parking bit. I had a couple of questions on the economic analysis that you went through, but I don't know if you've got more presentation that you'd like to get through before we go back to do that.
Well, the only other thing that I think is any issue at all is we are looking for essentially a waiver from the requirements of your parking regulations. We're also looking for a waiver on the buffers against Continental Boulevard and also the building setback requirement from Industrial Drive. Importantly, we're not looking for any relief from any of the buffer or building setback requirements from the northerly property line against the residential neighbors. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
So do you intend to subdivide this at all, or is this going to come forward as one site plan for this entire parcel?
It's likely to come as one lot. It may be... We haven't really determined what the form of ownership may be. It may be simpler for financing purposes to do like a land condominium or something like that, but we haven't really gotten there yet. It's not likely that we're going to create lots.
Okay. So the waivers that you're talking about are typically site plan related?
Correct.
I think the board has expressed, and at least I have, support for the concepts that you've presented, but it's ultimately in a conditional use permit level where we are now is not where you'd grant those waivers. But if you sort of are looking for the consensus of the board, we can think about it, and we can do that.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I think this is where you need to grant them, and here's why. Because the buffers are in the zoning. They're not in the site plan regs. So these buffers are all... And building setbacks are all enumerated in the I-3, I-2 zoning.
I got you. I just... I thought you were talking about landscape buffers, where we're talking about the level of trees and all of those kinds of things, which are site plan issues.
No. This is an actual described buffer.
I got you. No, you're right. I agree with that now.
I don't think we can waive it, Mr. Chairman.
No, I think that we can in a CUP.
They're in the zoning.
You can waive it?
Under a CUP.
In the CUP. It's expressly reserved to the planning board.
Within the mixed-use CUP provisions there, it is reserved, right, for the planning board to waive those dimensional requirements.
Okay.
Yep. Which is what Gordon was correcting me on as well. Thank you for that. So it's the buffer and setback waiver, and the other waiver was the parking calculation?
Parking, yeah.
So what's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request for waivers as a part of the CUP?
Can I just interject? I believe it's residential density as well, isn't it?
Well, yeah. I mean, perhaps.
Intertwined with the buffer and the lot requirement.
I mean, I think that if you approve this master development plan...
Yeah.
Then the numbers are on it. So you'd be approving the program that's on the plan, which, again, you are allowed to do under the CUP regulations.
So if we're dealing with it for the residential density, that goes for the other requirements too? And if we're approving this plan, it incorporates those buffers and parking ostensibly as well?
Yes. I mean, and we can put... Ultimately, Tim was looking for... In his memo, was looking for a clarification by way of notation of those waivers and those requirements, which we're happy to do.
I don't mind having a separate vote on them if that just makes it cleaner and easier for the record to not have any doubt about whether those waivers have been considered by the board and voted up or down, however the board chooses to vote. But it seems to me if we're looking at other various requirements that can be treated one way, they all should be treated the same way, so.
I would just say it doesn't read to me that you would need to do them separately. As long as you're approving this program as it's presented, then it would be those things have been waived by the board.
That seems like a reasonable approach to me.
Okay.
Des Rae?
I have a question, and it's... I can't remember if I missed one of the meetings where you presented as well, but the hotel, the area around the hotel, and also the area around apartment, the one on the bottom?
Yep.
Actually, both of those. Do you, in the process of doing the planning for this, do you talk to the fire department to find out if they are okay with the circulation around? Because the apartments are four-story buildings, and the hotel, I'm assuming, is going to be probably four stories with 120 keys in it.
We have not yet. And, you know, we understand that we're going to need to provide adequate fire lane and access to these buildings. So, you know, that's... I would argue that that's part of the site plan development.
Right. My only concern would be if they required access all the way around the building. That kind of screws up a lot of the design, especially on the hotel portion.
Well, I mean, we can provide a fire lane without doing it paved, for example. And, you know, that's something ultimately that, you know, we'll have to have a discussion with the fire people. I mean, these are going to be protected structures. They're going to, you know... And I'm no NFPA expert. I know they are, and they'll have their definite feelings about how that works, so we're prepared to do whatever we need to, to make that work.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
We have had approvals of site plans that have had unpaved access ways for the fire department, and they've gone along with that.
Fidelity, for example.
In the past. Certainly, that... One's much more recent than that.
Yeah.
Ones that I was actually in the boardroom. I know that such travel ways don't necessarily count as structures in setbacks, but they do. You're already looking at putting the buildings into the setbacks, and your access lanes, if you have to put them behind the building, are going to be even closer to Continental Boulevard.
Well, the... I think that the... Let me get to a pointer again. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Maybe not Continental.
But I would think that these two buildings are not an issue because you have essentially roads or parking aisles around everything. So these buildings are completely accessible. This building may need to have some kind of a fire lane around the backside of it, as may these, although I would argue that, you know, this building is close enough perhaps to Industrial Drive to count that as frontage. I mean...
Yeah, that's what I meant to say, Industrial Drive, not Continental, when I said Continental.
So this building, you know, you're absolutely correct. There, you know, there may need to be a modification to either the building location or to this stormwater management facility to allow access along the easterly side of that building. But, you know, we haven't had that discussion yet. So.
Understood. Vinnie?
Now that you have the pointer, can you clarify Phase 1, 2, 3, or 1, 2, 3?
Use your microphone, sir.
I can't. The question was whether I could clarify the phasing.
Yeah, with the pointer.
So these three buildings are the residential buildings. So that would be in the very first phase. And, you know, they're not going to happen all at once, so, you know, it's not like they're going to just pop up all at the same time. Then these two buildings would be part of that first phase, at least this building and perhaps, you know, maybe it's only a part of this building. Maybe it's, you know, having the ability to stack on top of that with a hotel and opening up some other areas for other kinds of uses, you know, perhaps some retail up in here. So that's the first phase, is basically this area. And that would include surface parking, you know, here, and surface parking as it's shown, you know, on the streets and to the west of those apartments. There also would be parking below these buildings. So, you know, we have to balance... We obviously need to have enough parking. So the plan would be to build enough surface parking to accommodate whatever it is that happens in Phase 1. And then Phase 2, or Phase 1B, or, you know, however we're characterizing it, would be the hotel and conference center. Phase 3 would be this office building.
Conference center being...
Well, right now, we have the conference center in this building, so...
Okay.
You know... You know, it's like...
As part of the...
Right. Um, and then this is, uh, like a fifty, fifty thousand plus, uh, office building, uh, plus some ground floor retail and restaurants. So, this would be the future phase, because you can't, you can't do this without doing the parking garage. You can't do it with, with simply surface parking. So, that's really the issue, is that the, the, the parking garage creates a cost that right now is only supported by a build-to-suit tenant.
You need the hotel. I get it. Okay, that brings up my next question. Um, as far as your phasing goes, and I'm kinda real particular about this, um, you know, if you're gonna say, well, we're gonna put up two apartment buildings, and then one of the office retail, and then the other apartment building, and then the other one, some sort of balance so that we don't just get stuck with apartment buildings?
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that.
That's, that's...
And, and, um, I guess the other thing that was mentioned in, uh, in, uh, Mr. Thompson's memorandum was the notion of a development agreement. And, we think that it, that executing a development agreement that outlines the specifics of, you know, what we'll commit to in terms of, of, you know, phasing and all of that would be a smart thing.
That would be discussed later. Gotcha.
Uh, and, and also defining what kind of latitude there might be, I mean, I, I'm not all that worried about, you know, if we need to make some kind of material change to the plan, coming back and discussing it with you all prior to, you know, blazing forward with, with, uh, uh, site plans. I'm, I'm not, because it's gonna look very much like this, and, you know, but we should have some kind of understanding of what, uh, what constitutes a significant change, just so we understand one another. And, uh, what would rise to the level of needing to come back to the board, and where we have latitude to respond to the market with, with our plans.
Right. Um, last question, and I apologize for, I guess you guys have been here twice before at this point?
At least once, but...
I've just been crazy busy. Um, the parking garage and the center office retail space, the only thing that I see is your, does your retail restaurant building that's on the side, I guess that would be the s... Where's your direction up there?
North is up.
North is up? Okay, so your southeast side? Is that gonna have parking in that?
This, this building here?
Yep.
No, those, the retail and restaurant and office, professional office buildings are not going to have parking.
And that's why...
Under them. At, at, at least currently, you know, as conceived.
And four hundred and something spaces in the parking garage, is that particularly for the conference center and the hotel? Or is it going to provide parking for much of the other space?
The only...
I, I see an imbalance in the parking, the way it's laid out. It's...
In terms of location?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, the parking garage more in the center, where the, where the office, and that's, it's only my opinion, but, and you do what you want.
Well, you, you could be right. I mean, uh, it could be that, you know, we flip this so that the office is, is vertical, and you, you know, you, you flip that ninety degrees...
Well, just...
Kind of thing.
My thought was the parking garage being closer to your retail space.
Yeah.
Because that's, at some point, is gonna be needed.
Yeah.
Um, because there is very minimal parking in the, in that area there.
I'm sure that the, um, I'm, I'm nearly positive that the hotel people are gonna have something to say about that.
Okay. Good enough. About what?
About where they wanna see the park, you know?
Oh, well, I would hope so, but... I, I apologize, cause like Vinny, I wasn't here the last time you were here, and I, I'm really at a loss for how you're planning to get people into your retail space. And so, I'm hoping you can take just a few minutes to help us understand your plan.
Absolutely. Uh, get people...
Well, people that come to your retail restaurant are gonna park at the opposite corner of the facility, and then walk all the way across in the winter in the snow, or in the summer in the rain?
Well, there is some parking on the street.
Where?
Parallel parking, on the street.
Oh, it's not shown, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Oh.
Um, there are, uh...
I, I never even got it booked, so I can't even look closer.
Yeah, the, um...
Oh, really? That's parallel, okay.
There are, yeah, there's like thirty, forty, forty spaces in the, around the green and, and, uh, adjacent to the apartments, until that office space is built. And, and I, I don't disagree with Mr. Russo's suggestion that, you know, perhaps, like I, like I said, maybe we wanna take that and flip it ninety degrees so that the parking deck is closer. But, the fact is that this is in, you know, a fairly urban environment, so, and we're not going to be able to have, it, it's not a situation where you're gonna have parking in front of buildings. It's just not. So, it, it seems to work at, in, in downtown Portsmouth. Uh, it seems to work in, in other places, and, uh, it just is what it is. It, it's a grand experiment.
Um, I actually kind of support the quote "grand experiment." I think that rearranging things and being less parking and automobile centric is a good thing, and it really helps the aesthetic of the buildings. I do get that it's an inconvenience for the people that have to do that, and they've gotta decide whether it's the place that they wanna do business, or, or rent, or, or live. Um, the one thing that isn't flexible in all of that is that you gotta have some handicap spaces.
Right.
And, and on that, that size of development, quite a number of them that are up near that building. And if you designate all thirty or forty of those things that are street parking as handicap, um, that might meet what you need for the size of the development you're talking about here at three hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet.
Well, i- if you, if you go through the numbers, uh, these two buildings are, uh, sixteen, or they're thirty-two thousand square feet each, all right? So, that's not a whole lot larger than, say, you know, and I hesitate to make, I, I, I don't wanna bring a big box comparison in there, but I mean, it's not that big. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah, no, that's smaller than your average grocery store, by a significant...
What's, what's needed for those two buildings is two handicap spaces each, which are shown on the plan.
I would've thought it was more.
Uh, and then, the hotel needs a number of park, uh, handicap parking spaces, which is four. The, uh, office, retail, restaurant in back needs probably more, but you have, uh, you know, they, they probably need a total of four to six. And then, the handicap parking for, uh, these, for, for these residential units are largely handled, uh, they're either handled out in the parking area in locations like this, or we can provide some, uh, interior to the building as well. So, I mean, we've, we've kind of taken a look at that. It really is specific to the kind of use that you have, and the, I mean, number of square foot, square footage, the amount of square footage you've got. So, uh, I would argue that that's kind of a, a more detailed kind of analysis than...
It is more of a site plan analysis, but it's at least worth mentioning...
Yeah, and we've, we've looked at that, and we have, uh, we've determined that it's, it is feasible to provide the number of spaces we need to.
Sure. Um, in response to one of the questions, or issues that, uh, Mr. Russo raised in terms of phasing, and this question of what's a significant change in the phasing plan, um, my point of view would be that the concept of phasing is intended to make sure that that economic analysis stays net positive. And so, that would be the guiding principle that I would use to say, what is a significant or insignificant change? Is anything that, put that into a negative state...
Right.
Um, would be a significant change, and not only a significant change, but one which you probably needn't bother coming back to the board to talk about.
Well, because it would be outside of the criteria that are required for, uh, for approval.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, but as long as you are, um, and you've got a, a significant analysis that's backed up by peer review for us, that says that the particular way that it's developing stays positive, then I'm comfortable leaving that to the staff to figure out administratively what the exact contours of that are.
Okay. Fair enough.
My thought. I don't know if the board agrees with me, obviously, if they, more than on a few occasions have disagreed. Desiree, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment to the configuration of the site that you have here. Just up the street, it's kinda this sort of setup anyway, so I mean, you've got the mall up there with all the parking around the outside edge of it, and the inside's all walkable. So, this is kinda gonna have that same feel, and it's gonna be sort of like, um, small little boulevards in there with some parking on there, so there'll be more walking space, so you can enjoy the nice outside right there. And you've got, you know, all of the cars kind of in one area, or in a couple areas. And, you know, if you're lucky, if you can get a spot up close, and if you're not, you know you can park in the back, and then you walk right there. So, um, I, I think it would be a reasonable configuration.
I think that there's also sort of a generational change in the approach to where you wanna live and where you wanna be, and whether it's automobile centric. There's more and more kids that don't get driver's licenses anymore, or want to live in ways without cars, and, um, building all of the buildings in the middle of a parking field to make sure people can park within eight feet of the entrance just isn't the model anymore.
That's absolutely correct.
And, this breaks from that model probably more than things that we've looked at in the past, but I'm intrigued to see whether it works, and I think that it's a different question whether you'd stand in the middle of that greenway and look around and say, this looks great, and a different question to say, it looks great and I wanna live here. Cause how much you've gotta put up with those inconveniences are different in that, but I think it's an interesting proposal. Did I say a hand, Nelson, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to your development agreement, or not the development agreement so much, but the phasing. We haven't seen anything written down, and I think we need to see a phasing plan that's, that's written down, that shows the, uh, cost benefits in each phase.
Well, as I said, I, you know, I, I'm hesitant to get too much in the weeds on that, uh, at this point, cause we don't really have any tenants. And we don't really understand, I mean, I, I think we can make the statement that We need to update the fiscal impact study to reflect the numbers that are...
Okay, I agree with that too, yes.
That are, that are current.
Glad to hear that.
Uh, part of that is also looking at costs, which may or may not be different than what I had in my, in my analysis. Um, the, I, I think we can say that we will develop this in a way that respects the town's requirement that it be fiscally positive as we go forward. And if that means that, you know, something's gotta happen before something else happens, then, you know, that's the way we can, we can approach it. I'm not sure that we can do that, I, I, I think we can do that as a part of the negotiation of the development agreement, is, is what I'm suggesting. Uh, rather than, you know, kinda get in, like I said, get into the weeds of all of that here.
I think the development agreement, we, I mean, we usually do have an applicant come and say, we're gonna build these three buildings in phase one, and those two buildings in phase two, and then we're gonna have some commercial before we move on to the next thing.
And, and we can memorialize that in a plan, Mr. Chairman.
So, I, I think though, in order to give you some of the flexibility that you're talking about, noting that the whole issue is being fiscally positive in terms of the impact, you've said that you've looked at your three residential buildings standalone, and what their costs and benefits are gonna be, and it's net positive for that. To me, that's the worst-case scenario where you've got the highest cost and the lowest taxes.
Right.
And if that's positive, then, at least from my viewpoint, you've pretty much satisfied all of the possible questions that I could have about whether the phasing works out, cause it won't get any worse than that, it can only be better than that as you add on to the commercial stuff.
That's absolutely right.
So, if you've got a financial, uh, impact study, or you, or we can revise one with these, uh, bits of changes, um, that our peer reviewer agrees with, that says that the three residential buildings, period, are net positive economic impacts.
Well, and just a cor, a minor correction to what you just said. Uh, I, I did the analysis that showed, you know, development of one of these buildings and a portion of the, you know, like one and a half of these buildings, along with the three apartment buildings, uh, would be fiscally positive.
And I think that that's probably a better...
Standing alone as, standing alone as a, as a residential project is not what this develop, developer wants to do. I mean...
Yeah. No, your approach is correct for another reason, and that is that you're not mixed use until you get some commercial in there.
Right.
So, that's gotta go along with the residential...
Some level of, of commercial in office needs to be done at the same time.
So, whatever's in that basket of things that have to get done with those residentials as a first group, one A, one, whatever, um, to know that that's, um, economically positive for the town satisfies the phasing question for me, and how, what occurs after that that adds on to it is only gonna improve that equation...
Right.
As it goes forward.
That's right.
Um, but I did have some questions about the economic analysis and some of the changes between the old and the new, and I think that I kind of gleaned from your explanation that the old economic analysis came up with about eleven kids, and the new ones are thirteen to sixteen kids.
Correct.
And, the old economic analysis was about a six hundred thousand dollar net positive, and that's trimmed down a little bit because of the extra kids and the adjusted tax rate to be something like four fifty to five hundred positive.
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to sort of be clear about.
And, you know, one of the other things that, i- if we go through this and, and basically redo it, redo the analysis, we need to account for, uh, the revaluation as well. So, it's likely that, just like the rest of town, I mean, I, I derived these numbers from my knowledge of what construction costs and a review of similar uses and assessed valuations in town. So, we may be able to get a little bit more granular on the actual valuations as well, and my suspicion is that those are going to go up along with the tax rate going down. So, it may actually be better than what I just said. Like I said, I, I, I just took, you know, a few minutes and, and reran the numbers based on the numbers that were in Mr. Arnett's report and, and Tim's, uh, suggestions, but there's a, there's a revenue side to that as well, I guess is my point.
Yeah, I agree with your point that there's a revenue side to that, and I think all of us around town are feeling that the tax rate and the revenue, they, they've affected us all. You may find that some of the comparisons that you made are difficult because there isn't another animal like this.
No, I mean, I, I took the, like a class A office space, and I took retail, you know, new retail space, and I took restaurants, and I took, you know, but you're right, there isn't anything that has the sort of synergies that are here, and I'm, I believe that it, it affects the value in a positive way, but I don't know that it's going to affect the assessment in, in, in...
Yeah, I don't know how the assessors do their work, but I think that the whole point of a CUP is that it's...
It's kind of a black box.
Yeah, they won't tell you either. But I think the whole point of what you're trying to accomplish here, and the reason that we have CUPs, is that you're more than the sum of your parts...
Right.
Um, in terms of what is supposed to come out of it. Um, I don't know if others have more questions about the things that we've been talking about, or whether you wanna move to a bit different area, but I wanna make sure we talk about some of the concerns that the neighbors brought up with headlights and traffic patterns and, um, those kinds of things.
Yeah, and, um, I, uh, we heard loud and clear what those, um, what those concerns were, and, uh, I think that between, uh, a landscape solution and perhaps, uh, you know, some fencing, or a, a fencing solution, or, you know, barrier solution, we can come up with an answer that, uh, if not making everyone happy, I think will address, uh, the concerns that we've, that we've heard.
So, from my standpoint, I, I, one of the points that you made last time is there's a whole lot of difference between light shining from your development into their yard, or being able to see lights through trees.
Right.
But those are two different things. Um, headlights on cars don't go four hundred feet. Um, they don't, not intended to, and they don't. Um, and especially not through woods and all of that kind of thing. But they are gonna be visible if you're over there in the yard looking the other way. Um, and that's where a fence or some barrier, some landscaping starts to create a solution to those kinds of things. Um, and that's, you know, some of the things I want you to pay attention to when you get to site plan review. And that's, you know, some of the things I want you to pay attention to when you get to site plan review. I don't think that that's the right phase for now.
Absolutely.
Some of their concerns about being able to hear people come and go from a restaurant, the normal noise of people that are just getting, leaving a restaurant and getting in their car is not going to, I, I don't think even be possible to be heard at that distance. It's like me hearing that my neighbor three doors down getting in their car.
Well, and, and I think the important thing for the board to consider is that the standard should not be whether you can hear something or not. Because people can hear all kinds of things. The standard should be, is it a, is it a nuisance? Or does it rise to the level of, of, of being, you know, creating, impacting the quiet enjoyment of, of your own property?
I think that, yeah, that's a good point.
And I, I would also argue that if restaurants are an issue, restaurants are an allowed use. So-
Yeah, they're allowed use as a matter of right in that district, separate from a CUP. When we were talking before, there was at least some discussion about the possibility of music or outdoor music and all of those kinds of things, which I think could fit well with what you have going on here. If that is ultimately a part of the plan, use of the thing, I think that we would talk about restrictions on hours-
Yeah.
-just so it isn't late at night and it isn't, you know.
And I think that would be fine. I don't think that creating, obviously if you have a hotel, that's a 24-hour operation. I think we need to be careful about hours of operation. Hours of service pickup, hours of, hours of, you know, outdoor events.
That kind of thing.
All of that, I think, would be perfectly acceptable.
No, I didn't mean that you'd have to not operate your hotel at night because that's usually when people want to use one. But if you're going to do outdoor music or if you're going to arrange for deliveries or garbage trucks or all of that kind of thing-
Right.
-that those would be kind of some limitations that we would talk about in these kinds of things. Looking through Tim's memo, there's a couple of areas that he's highlighted as if required by the planning board. We should probably at least talk about those, but as far as I'm concerned, if required, the answer is yes.
Okay. Well, and those are, uh, uh, well, with regard to the fiscal impact analysis, one of the things that Mr. Arnett indicated was that when I did the fiscal impact analysis, I simply took the costs for, I did, it's a standard methodology for, for, for analyzing municipal costs. And that is a per capita and per employee analysis. So what Mr. Arnett indicated was that, you know, perhaps we may want to get, again, a little bit more granular on that. I would argue that this is different than, than Merrimack Premium Outlets in that this is nowhere near as much of a sort of attractive nuisance from a policing standpoint or from, from a fire standpoint than, it's not, this is not as much of, of an issue as the Premium Outlets facility is. I mean, you have potentially people coming there to create problems. And I doubt very much that this is going to be the same scenario. I'm happy to have some discussions with, with the fire department and the, and the, the police department. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that translates very easily into a cost number because they provide similar services all over town. And the reality is that, you know, because MPO is here, there's a much greater police presence here already than there is in other sections of town. So assessing the marginal cost of a call or 10 calls or whatever to this facility is kind of difficult. But that being said, I mean, I'm happy to have that conversation if, you know, you direct me to.
Yeah. It, it certainly doesn't hurt to have the conversations, and I know Chief Doyle's a good person who's going to do his best to provide the information to the fire department.
And they've been incredibly helpful throughout the entire process of my involvement with the town. So I'm, I mean, like I said, I'm happy to talk to them.
I know that they consider the outlet mall to be its separate policing district within the town. It's, I don't know what they, what they call that sort of area, how they divide up the town and label the areas, but it's a separate patrol or district or however they deal with it and so-
Well, they have kind of a substation up there, you know, where they have an office and, you know, the availability of a booking room and, you know, all of that. So they don't have to go back to the station to do all of that.
So it may be because of the way that it's set up easier to consider some additional costs to that than it would be integrated into the town proper in the way the, the patrol districts are set up.
Fair enough.
Since it's a separate one. I, I also took that same paragraph to mean verifying the cost of water services or utility services or some of the things that you're going to require that there. I mean, it's usually part of site plan to make sure that you've gotten an indication that those are available and the quantities that you need and all of that, but-
Well, my understanding is that, and, you know, Merrimack Village District kind of is busy doing other things apparently. Because we haven't really, we've got, there was one memo, which frankly I hadn't, I haven't seen, but went to, went to Tim relative to water service for this development. My understanding is that there is water available. And it's just a matter of figuring out what the system development charge, if any, would be. So it's kind of their job to provide water. And so, and there's, there's adequate capacity in the distribution system to allow them to provide us with water. Where that water comes from, whether it comes from an improved connection to Penachuck down at Penachuck Square or out on DW Highway or elsewhere in town is really not my business.
No, I agree with that. I think that the point that you made that there's an assertion that there is water available is something we usually require them to verify. And if they have done so, and that's why you're saying that it's available, then that solves that problem. And if they haven't said so, but you know from experience that it's available, we'd be looking for that verification from them. Where they write us a five-sentence letter that says we can supply the water to the-
Well, there was a, you know, when, when we negotiated the Merrimack Premium Outlets project, there was a number that was associated, a use number, both a flow number, like a GPM number, and there was a daily usage number that was associated with that. And that included fire flows, which is why we have the million gallon tank up there, however big it is, the fire tank. The fire flows, the fire demand are, you know, those numbers are not going to change all that much from what was previously proposed. If you have, because it's kind of based on the biggest building that you have, because not all of these are going to be on fire at the same moment. Or at least that's the assumption. If they are, then we've got a much larger problem. So it's the same thing as up on top of the hill. I mean, the assumption is that not all of those buildings are going to be involved at the same time. So, so the fire flows, I think, have been established. And you're, you're just really talking about, about domestic usage. My understanding is that the domestic usage up on top of the hill is significantly less than was predicted. But in any case, if we are with this project within that, and I want to say it was 459,000 gallons a day. Don't quote me on it, but that's what has stuck in my mind for the last eight years. I, I want, if we are, if the domestic, if the domestic plus fire is within that 459,000 gallons a day, then they have an obligation to provide this project with water at no additional cost. Because that amount of water was agreed to as a part of the MPO approval. If it's more than that, then, you know, we probably need to talk to them about a system improvement charge, which was essentially waived in the initial approvals in exchange for doing the, you know, whatever the number was, two and a half million dollar 16-inch pipe from Continental Boulevard to DW Highway. So, you know, and, and it's not like they didn't try. But they wound up, at the end of the day, the commission wound up waiving that system improvement charge. And there is a, there's an agreement in effect to that effect.
You know, th- those things sound familiar to me, particularly the notion that the usage up on top of the hill was estimated extraordinarily high. I remember thinking about it the first time I saw it, and I'm thinking, there's just no way that you're going to use that much water in a retail establishment. They just, they don't use much water. I don't remember if it was 459 or any other number, but-
That is a number, I would agree, that number's stuck in my brain too.
Did it really?
I seem to remember that number. I remember numbers better than names, Mr. Smith. Oh, sorry, go on.
At, at the time that I saw the number, I was working in, in the law office with some people that were doing bottling plants. And they don't use those kinds of numbers in a bottling plant.
Right.
And so it just bowled me over the first time I heard it. I think it's just inconceivable that a mall would use that kind of water unless it was all on fire at the same time.
Right.
So, but nonetheless, if all of those things are true, it's a simple thing to get that confirmed from the MVD and have them write a letter saying so as a part of the process, whether that's now or as a site plan. So we talked about, oh, the other thing that was if required by the planning board is a development agreement.
Right.
And so we would want to see one of those-
And we've already talked about that. I mean, we're in full, well, we're in full agreement that that's, that's a probably a smart idea. And the rest of the, the rest of the conditions we're in full agreement with.
So the second item on there is that you're revising the plan as necessary to address any requirements determined applicable by the planning board. And they specifically mentioned buffer requirements and screening. I tend to agree with your sense that how you landscape or create a berm or create some fencing to protect some of the headlight spill over and those kinds of things is a site plan issue. But nonetheless, we've got this requirement that the department is suggesting the planning board impose as a part of the CUP. And so maybe there's a way to take a step in that direction at the CUP that gets fleshed out more.
We can certainly make a statement in either the application narrative or on the plan that, that, you know, we've heard that concern and we will address it moving forward.
Okay. That would be, that would be satisfied, satisfied. And that would include the headlight stuff, but also whatever activity you have on the site that would potentially make enough noise to be a nuisance. So that would include delivery trucks, things with backup alarms on them, as well as events.
Outdoor events.
Yeah, outdoor events.
Okay.
And I think that that would, yeah.
Before you move on, I have some other questions.
Oh, please do.
Now?
Yes, please.
Okay. One, one thing that just came up, the, you talked about the MPO water. And if, if they're not using all their water, then by right you should be able to use some of it. Are you connected with the MPO project?
Yes.
Or is this a separate program?
It's a separate program, but it was, we're using their access. We're also using their fire protection line. There's a, there's a line down to the site from, from the tank. So we're, we're kind of attached at the hip to them.
The, the small retail that's halfway up the hill went through a big issue with water access and, and-
Did they?
Things of that nature. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't aware.
Which was a fairly expensive, fairly extensive discussion on whether they had to pay for, what did you call it? You know, access improvements or something like that. So you might check into that more carefully because I would have thought they were considered part of that whole project as well.
Well, they were, there was a certain amount of, uh, there was a certain amount of flow that was associated with all of those properties. And they were a bit more aggressive with their program than was initially envisioned. So it's, it's not all that surprising to me that they're, you know, initially we had like a 6,500 square foot restaurant there and that was it. So, you know, they've got three smaller restaurants, but it's three restaurants and then they've got the bank. So I, I think it's more of an issue that, you know, they kind of went over their allotment. And I would argue that the developer of that property has a far different relationship with Simon Premium Outlets than Mr. Monahan has.
I wouldn't argue that. If I could go on a little bit, parking, you talked a little bit about the parking and Desiree indicated there is parking underneath the apartments.
Correct.
Which I didn't hear or understand in any of your discussion. Is that restricted to the apartments?
Yes.
Okay, so there's some restricted access to it.
There is, when you, when you go through the shared parking analysis, at least one parking space per residential unit is not shared at all. So it's dedicated to that residential use. So, and, and we're thinking that that's at least the parking underneath the, underneath the buildings. And perhaps, perhaps additional, we haven't, haven't quite figured that out yet. But, but at least one, one parking space per unit is not in the shared, it's, it's in the overall number, but it's not shared.
Okay, and it is restricted in some way so that people go into the retail, can't use it?
Yeah.
Okay. The tax rate you were discussing versus 2016 and 2015, you pointed out that 2016 is a little bit reduced from 2015. I might also point out that there was a $750,000 plus or minus clerical error-
Yeah.
-where the town overbilled nonprofits and whatnot originally and had to withdraw that. And hasn't changed the tax rate as a function of that. So if you would just-
So what's the effect of, on the tax rate of that?
I don't know how much it is. That's why I'm going to ask you to touch base with town offices.
Okay.
It was in the union leader, but I, I have to say-
Yeah, somebody took a potshot estimate at it. I don't know if it was official, but it was something like, I don't know, 50 or 60 cents a thousand or something.
Yeah, something like that.
So the rate would go up by 50 or 60 cents?
By a certain amount. It's almost guaranteed to go up next year by that amount. Because the town's absorbing that error.
Right.
This year.
Right, right, right. Yeah, Tim told me about that, actually.
Okay, so when you're calculating, just make sure you try to adjust for that, please. And then the buffers and building encroachment that you were talking about earlier, I, I don't understand. It looked like a lot of your buildings were in that building setback area, and so you were looking for relief from that.
If you look at this, we have two different things. We have buffers, which is the darkly shaded area. That's a buffer requirement.
Okay, yeah.
And that's 100 foot from the property line. And then there is a, a building setback requirement, which is, I believe it's, I believe this, the building setback requirement is 200 feet from the residential zone line. So whether there's a, whether there's a residential use there or not, it's 200 feet from the residential zone line. In the case of Continental Boulevard, this little sliver of land, which is owned by the town, is former right-of-way for Camp Sergeant Road. When they built Continental, it became not right-of-way and it's now a parcel that's essentially unbuildable but owned by the town. That maybe counterintuitively remained residentially zoned when they did all of the rezoning. Because there was nobody clamoring for it to be rezoned. So really, the land across the street is industrially zoned.
Right.
And you've got that little piece there, and that's all that's creating that building setback. The buffer, as I mentioned earlier, is in the zoning by meets and bounds. And again, that was because at the time this was all conceived, Continental Boulevard was, you know, perhaps more residential in nature. Likewise, across the street on Fidelity's property, a little-known fact, the entire frontage of Industrial Drive, as well as the entire frontage of Continental Boulevard on Fidelity's property, is still residentially zoned. So the residential zone line is the center line of Industrial Drive. So there's a building setback from there. That's why there's no, there's no, there's no buffer shown here because there isn't a buffer. But there is a residential, there is a- here because there isn't a buffer, but there is a residential, there is a, 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 a building setback line. So, that's what we're asking you to waive, is the building setback line in the case of Continental Bou, or in the case of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive and the buffer associated with Continental Boulevard.
So, those things are essentially, they, they come to exist because of the regulation that says you put buffers between residential and, in this case, CUP. But the fact that there's residential zoning there at all is some leftover artifact.
It's an artifact, yeah.
Which is, you know, one of the things we discussed at an earlier meeting, which made, it makes sense as to Continental and Industrial not to have a lot of, to lose a lot of sleep over those buffers and setbacks. And then, I think Gordon said it again tonight, as to the actual residential property to the north, they're observing their buffers and they're not looking for any relief.
Right, right. That's correct.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification there. Thank you very much.
I think it's an important one, though, to consider for this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, whilst I'm sort of excited about the prospect, the only thing that's nagging at my brain is that an earlier CUP called Crosswoods Path, we had a, a building in the center of Crosswoods Path on the front of it, which was originally supposed to be the mixed-use part of the exercise, which has now, through lack of use or because there's no need for office space, become, it's now residential. How can you justify to me that you really are going to get the sort of office space requirement, which is going to be essential to make it cost, the thing to be cost positive? I mean, we, we hear stories about, you know, working from home and all this other stuff. How confident can you be or can you make me feel that you really are going to get offices in there?
Well, I don't know how confident I can make you feel, Mr. Mills, but I will say that this works from a financial perspective largely because of the mixed use. And, you know, it's kind of a, there is a synergy there that, uh, that kind of increa, increases the value of, like, like the chairman said earlier, it, it increases the overall, the sum of the parts is, is, uh, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts.
Better than the individual part. I got that bit.
So, uh, with respect to market, I mean, the hotel market is, is a, is a, uh, is a difficult thing in Merrimack. I mean, there are many hotels in Merrimack. I would argue, and, and Mr. Monahan argues to people who call him all the time, that this is a unique site. It's surrounded by office use, all of which, you know, has a need for, for hotel space and conference space. It, it, it's, this is not exit eleven. It's exit ten. And unless you have an intimate understanding of the locale, then, you know, you're not going to get that. So, that's the value proposition that the Monahan companies need to make to prospective tenants. I'm pretty confident that those uses are going to show up. I just can't tell you when. And I would argue that, first of all, in order to make any major changes, you know, significant changes to the development, we're going to have to come back and talk to you about that. But the worst-case scenario, you know, we're going to, as we've discussed, I, I think it's rational to analyze what we could envision as the worst-case scenario and as long as that meets the criteria for the conditional use permit, then we should be good. And the rest of it is, is gravy, which we all fervently hope is going to happen. Now, you know, just as an example, if you look at, uh, you know, this office building, uh, you know, lease rates for buildings are, in this market, are, you know, hovering around, I don't know, eighteen, twenty dollars a square foot, triple net. So, uh, what would it cost to build a building like that with a part, with structured parking? It may cost more like twenty-eight dollars a square foot, triple net. So, that's why we're hesitant to say that that's going to be the first phase because, you know, it clearly isn't. The market isn't there for that unless somebody, uh, shows up and says, I want to be right there and I'm willing, you know, I want to be there enough that I'm willing to pay a premium to be there and, you know, please build this building for me and I will occupy it. And that could be one of the other users that's right around there. It could be somebody completely different. But until that happens, that building's not going to get built. So, that's why we're being as clear as we can be about, about the phasing issue. The hotel is a little bit different because the hotel, I think there is a demonstrable market. We just haven't, we just haven't talked to the right people yet. And the retail space, I think it's, it's, it's very clear that the retail and restaurant space are supported by both the residential component as well as the surrounding land uses. So, I mean, it's all kind of, it's all kind of conjecture until, until it gets built. But i- it's as good a case as we can, you know, as I can make right now that, you know, it's going to, that this is a feasible and, and, and constructible plan. I don't, I don't know what else to tell you.
I think I'd also add a little bit of observation to that. First, what you're getting, the concern you're getting at is why they've got to figure out how to be revenue positive in whatever they build in the first, it has to be mixed-use and revenue positive in the first bit of construction, however that turns out, and stay revenue positive all the way through. And they've got to convince us with their economic analysis as backed up by Arnett that that's the case. I also observe that Crosswoods Path first is a PUD, not a CUP. So, it's got a little bit of a different set of rules that apply to it. But also, the bit of commercial that it takes to make a CUP grow is just a, any amount of commercial. So, a restaurant or something like that, or pharmacy or something. On this site, with the outlet mall up on the hill, they didn't have any trouble at all getting the restaurants to go into that site and although one of them's gone and it's now sprint, they're staying, those commercial sites are much easier to fill and have had a better track record historically than the other end of town where things are much more sparse and there isn't a whole lot of other things that create that orbit, that, that orbit that allows you, gravity, traffic flow that allows there to be some commercial. So, I think that there's some reason to believe the optimism, but I don't think that you have to believe the optimism if you show me the math that says it's net positive even with the residential and the minimum amount of commercial that you think goes with it.
Right, right.
So, that's the key.
And, you know, the other piece of it is, and, and, you know, we already, we already have identified, I mean, we don't have any, any signed deals, but we've already identified more than twenty thousand square feet of, of retail that may want to locate at this site. And, you know, they're talking with restaurant operators as well. So, you know, I don't think the restaurant and retail is going to be an issue. I think the office is going to be an issue. And, uh, and I don't think the, I don't think the residential's going to be an issue. And ultimately, once things start happening and you can like see the environment there, I don't think the hotel's going to be an issue either. So...
I hear what you're saying about the hotel and what the pitch is and why there's some synergies that make this hotel different than exit eleven and all of that. At the same time, you've also said that there's been at least some sluggishness about finding that operator that wants to come forward and do that. So, there's two sides to the argument.
There are. But, I mean, I think ultimately, uh, with somebody with the staying power that Mr. Monahan has already demonstrated and local knowledge that we can make this happen.
So, Tom, did you have further questions that you wanted to ask?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
Desiree, did you have any? I know that we haven't heard any public opinion yet either. So, Nelson?
Well, I had a few questions if we could.
Yes, please.
Touch on them first. Just one that popped into my mind as we're looking at this site and the setbacks and had some discussion. It occurs to me that that wedge of land, which is residual from Camp Sergeant Road on the west side of your property.
This?
Yeah, that wedge of land you said was owned by the town. And I know the town from time to time looks to dispose of parcels like that, that are of no tax value to the town. And you might be able to negotiate something with the town. If, I, I'm not promising anything. I'm just, I'm not speaking for the town. I'm just suggesting it.
And, and I appreciate that. I, I, I think that it's a little more complicated than that, however, in that this right-of-way or this property line, uh, along this edge, along the Continental Boulevard edge, is actually controlled access DOT right-of-way. So, there's a gap in between that is still right-of-way technically between that sliver of land and this property line.
There's still a class six road there.
There is. And, and so...
DOT right-of-way?
This right-of-way is DOT, this right-of-way along Camp Sarge, or Continental Boulevard is DOT right-of-way. And it is controlled access.
DOT is, as far as I understand, it goes on to Green, up as far as Greens Pond Road and then I think the town takes over.
Boy, you know, there is some confusion there.
DOT says they stop at industrial, but at least that's what I thought I heard, but...
Well, they may stop owning the road. For the purposes of maintenance.
They do plow up to Greens Pond Road.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think it's pretty clear that they, that they do own up to Greens Pond Road. And I think that it's arguable that they own up to where Camp Sergeant comes into, up to that corner.
Yeah.
In terms of the, in terms of the condition of the right-of-way. And the reason that that complicates things is that if you want to break controlled access, it takes, uh, it's not limited access, but it's controlled access, which means that at some point DOT compensated the owner of this land to eliminate the ability to access.
I wasn't thinking of accessing.
No, but it's still, once you sell the property...
I get that. But if you cross it, if you cross it, you're breaking that right-of-way.
Yeah.
So, you keep...
I'm just trying to give you a little wiggle.
I, I appreciate the thought, but it's like, it's bigger than you and me.
Okay. All right.
I, I don't know any history with this one, but I do know that when we heard, heard the application for the Dunkin' Donuts across the street, that there's all sorts of peculiarly shaped land abutting Continental Boulevard that's not part of his lot, isn't part of Continental Boulevard. The
Right.
The town and the state apparently are both playing hot potato and saying, not me. And the land records, at least from a legal standpoint, say that that can't exist.
Well, when, there was, there was quite a bit of discussion when we did the improvements on Industrial Drive and on Continental Boulevard as to who owned what. And, you know, Andy O'Sullivan from the department or from Turnpikes did a yeoman's job doing research and figuring, trying to figure out all the moving pieces there. I'm not sure that he was entirely successful, but my understanding is that they kind of agreed with the town that, you know, we'll maintain from here to here because we think we own that. And the signal systems clearly are both DOT signals. Industrial Drive in its entirety is DOT. The other thing that we cleaned up as a part of the MPO development was there apparently was no easement in place for stormwater. So, all of the drainage from, from Industrial Drive discharges onto Fidelity's property. And, and actually, the, uh, the stormwater management basin, uh, that was constructed as a part of an earlier project in this location, discharges into the DOT system. So, by extension, discharges onto Fidelity's property. There was no easement for any of that. So, we actually were, or MPO, Simon negotiated an agreement with Fidelity that would allow them right of discharge of a certain volume of, of stormwater. Functionally, it has no impact on their property because it's all sand and it's a huge wetland system that is, you know, can, can pretty much take unlimited amounts of water. But...
I think some of these old quirky lands, land issues are interesting to know about in the history and why is there still some residential on the other side of Industrial Boulevard. Are, are, and someone doing some research and saying that they think they figured out the lay of the land, to use the pun, is also interesting. But until all of the parties sort of not only come to agree, but then correct the registry of deeds or obtain some transfer or fix those things from a legal standpoint, it isn't, it still isn't solved and nobody want, nobody's motivated to go pay the shovel to quiet title to a triangular strip of nothing.
Oh, right, right. And like I said, the, as far as I can tell, the controlled access right-of-way is where our desire stops. It's a hard line.
Okay. All right. Didn't mean to. Thought it was going to be simpler than that. The, the other thing is, I, for the record, I want to agree with the chairman's statement that we would like to, those things that were suggested as being if the planning board requires the town's officials to take a look. I agree with that and I think that's something we should do.
Okay.
When reviewing the hotel impact statement, and I think this was something you said you had worked on, Gordon, was they, they rate the, the impact to the town based on the number of employees in the hotel, not on the number of rooms or any of the guests, implying that the guests have no impact on the town. And I just question that and I would like whoever is looking at it for the town to look at that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can, I can have a chat with Stu Arnett about that. I mean, the, the way that you typically do it is by, you know, if it's a, if it's a commercial use, you look at the number of employees. If it's a, if it's a residential use, you look at the number of residents.
Yeah, but I think a hotel's just a little different. My impression, I would like one of the pros to have a look at it.
That's perfectly fine, although, although I, I, I think it's going to come out, it's going to surprise you.
I've been surprised already tonight.
I mean, certainly if there's, if there's a bunch of hotel rooms there, there's going to be some police calls to the hotel rooms as a result of the patrons and not the employees.
Right.
What that number is or whether it's significant, whether it changes the analysis, I don't have any idea.
Zero didn't seem like the right number.
I would tend to agree with that.
Well, it's, it's not zero. It's, it's actually, it's something north of zero, but it's, it's less than two hundred.
Well, they used zero in the analysis. That's what I'm saying.
Well, they included the employee count and I guess they figured that covered it.
Guests zero. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Vinny, do you have a question that you're...
I'm good.
Okay. If there aren't any others, I know that we saw a couple of folks that have decided not to wait out their opportunity. But if there are any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in and let the planning board hear something about this application. If there are none, then we'd close that public hearing. I know that we've talked about accomplishing a few things in terms of edit to the economic analysis and some divisions of it into what might be a phase, a first phase and knowing how to do that. I want to understand from the board whether the board wants to see that at a meeting here before we determine whether we approve the conditional use permit or whether that would be a condition of approval of the conditional use permit, knowing that whatever we decide on this process doesn't actually give them the ability to put a shovel in the ground. This is step one. They'd have to go and get their development agreement and meet all of our conditions before they could even submit a site plan. And so, what do you guys think? Do you want to see this analysis stuff fixed ahead of time or do you want to see it as a condition? a condition of approval?
I'd like to see the analysis. I have a final document with the final analysis in it.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Disco. It strikes me that we could give conditional final approval for the CUP on the basis all these conditions have to be met before we sign off on it.
Yeah, we're not going to sign off on it and they're going to be back before us where you can have any kind of questions about those kinds of things to say. Have you done what you said you were going to do and all that? So, I tend to agree. Desire?
I agree with you and I'd just like a final copy of it when I'm, you know, when everything's settled. Obviously.
Are there other things other than the financial analysis that we've asked them to make some changes with in terms of the document itself, the impact statement?
There were notes on the plan memorializing requirements with, or acknowledging lighting and deliveries and events and so forth as well.
I was thinking in terms of what you had in your submitted proposal, that, any, any changes to that that would be made other than the economic analysis? I don't remember discussing any, I was checking if anybody else had any recollection of that.
Can I just clarify on the discussion about the development agreement and phasing? I had noted that the board would require in the development agreement that it's mixed use and revenue positive with peer review required on that.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's what I wanted to have happen. Any other comments or questions? Gordon, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
I remember before that you showed me a little bit more about your sidewalks and how that layout was going to go when I was satisfied with it, but as I'm looking at it right now, it's either too small or there aren't any sidewalks.
No, there are sidewalks. This is the same plan that you looked at the last time. There are, there are sidewalks along Continental and Industrial.
I don't even have the benefit of this, I've got a much smaller thing over there to look at.
Well, you can, do you have a copy of...
Mr. Chairman, there are.
I just want to make sure it didn't change.
No, it did not change.
Last time you showed this to me, I was satisfied. I left my book in the car.
There's sidewalks, all the, all those sidewalks.
Okay. I got you. Yes, thank you, thank you for that.
We, did we wind up with a sidewalk connection to Camp Sergeant Road?
It's, yeah, what page are you in this?
There is a, there is a sidewalk connection in this location, if you look at the pointer.
Yeah, there is.
And I, I think, I mean, we can certainly talk to, when we get to site plan, we can talk about how other ways of doing that, but my understanding was that the neighbors really didn't want to see any kind of explicit connection between the neighborhood.
Well...
I appreciate their input.
I'm sorry, but I can't agree with that. I think we want to see, I want to see the ability of people, pedestrians from this area to be able to walk to Camp Sergeant Road.
And that's fine.
And it's fair in this plan.
They have the ability to do that under this plan. They also, you know, we could also look at providing some kind of sidewalk along that, along that driveway.
And we can do that with this plan.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Hi, hate to... Sidewalks, yes, but are we going to try to encourage other types of passive vehicular traffic, bicycle lanes, something like that? Is that something that's been brought up so that people at some point from that other area can get into this area? I mean, if you're trying to make it a mixed use with some sort of activity where people can do things?
Well, I mean, the reality is that we're not proposing to make, to do any construction on Camp, on Continental Boulevard or on Industrial Drive. So, there's no widening to include bike lanes. I believe that both Camp Sergeant Road, right, I'm sorry, both Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive meet current DOT standards with respect to shoulder widths for bicycle use. There is, you know, the potential for bicycle access. This is a gated driveway. There's an emergency gate that is optocom-controlled at that location. If you want to ride a bike up to MPO from Camp, from Camp Sergeant Road, you can walk to your bike around that gate. There's nothing stopping you from doing that.
And soon there'll be a sidewalk that'll help you.
Well, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, my, my question is, is as a sidewalk, what's standard width?
Uh, I mean, standard width would be at least five feet.
And would Merrimack have, happen to have any type of regulations that doesn't allow bicycle use on sidewalks?
I don't think so.
The state does.
And in fact, the sidewalk going up to MPO was widened on the suggestion of a well-known board member so that the fire engines could get up there, even if it was solid of cars, rather than have an alternative backdoor entrance, which was the original idea, which would really upset the neighbors. So, that is, I believe I'm right in saying 20, 25 or 30-foot wide, so...
Oh, no, it's not that wide.
It's not that wide, but it's 10 or 12 feet wide.
I think it's 12, I think it, it may be 12 feet.
12, sorry, whatever number it is, but it was specially widened so that the fire engine, having come in the gated access, can go all the way up the sidewalk.
So, expanding on that and looking at fire access around the apartment buildings, is that something that could be considered as maybe something wider than five feet?
Well...
Because you're going to have, you're, you've already talked about around the apartment buildings on the south that you're having, you'll have a potential issue of having to do some sort of fire lane access.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we may consider. I mean, the, the, uh, the discussion, i- is your intention, I guess I'm just trying to understand the question, the, before I commit to anything.
Go ahead.
Is your intention to provide a bike path? Is that your intention? Because that, that is not what's in this plan.
I, I wouldn't want to discourage the use of bicycles.
I don't think that that would discourage the use of bicycles, and in fact, I think that, you know, if you had a five-foot wide or six-foot wide path, that you're likely to see more bicycles on it than pedestrians, frankly.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would say certainly six or seven feet, but taking the two-way traffic, rollerbladers, things like that. I mean, if you're really trying to work on mixed use, it's going to try to really get some sort of...
The, the notion of mixed use and multimodal are two different things.
Okay, we'll let that go. All right. Thank you for listening.
I want to talk a little bit more about bikes. So, first of all, with respect to your sidewalks and how wide they are and whether there's regulations that deal with pedestrians or bicyclists, I think the entirety of your sidewalks through MPO and your entire site are all private. And so, they can be whatever you want them to be. With the, any regulation that would deal with who rides bikes or walks or hoverboards or anything else on them is an internal question for you to deal with, as is how you're going to deal with snow on them.
Right.
And so, it wouldn't really matter whether there was some limitation or regulation. People want to ride their bike on it and it's there, they can. But I think that some consideration for where the people who live there might keep their bike, like bike racks down in the parking or garage or some setup like that that encourages it and facilitates. It's probably as important as whether the sidewalk is a foot wider, because I think if I lived there, I'd probably ride where the cars go, not where the bike, not, not on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Maybe I'd walk my way around that gate if I was going to go up that way.
And it would be, it would be fairly straightforward to provide, you know, lockers or some kind of secure storage within that underground parking area for, for, for bicycles. I mean, I think that, that would be some, that, that's something that is a reasonable, a reasonable thing. Just to clarify, you know, there is a, there is a sidewalk along this section of Premium Outlets Boulevard, and I believe it is a five-foot sidewalk. The intention would be that the sidewalk along Industrial Boulevard and the sidewalk along Continental Boulevard would be at least primarily within the right-of-way and therefore would be actual, you know, there would be sidewalks, even though they're not directly adjacent to the edge of pavement, because I, I think that there are some safety issues with that frankly, and some...
Oh, I agree, I don't like the sidewalks on the edge of pavement.
And this isn't all curbed, I don't believe, so, you know, you have an issue there. So, what I'm showing is kind of a meandering sidewalk because we've got the room for it. The sidewalks internal to the development are, no doubt, private.
Okay, so, some questions to the ones along the roadway and the roadway right-of-way?
Correct. And, and just so everybody knows, I mean, these are, these sidewalks along the, the commercial frontage are more like, I think they were, I think they were about 30 feet. So, there's, there's room, it's more of a plaza kind of thing so that there's room for outdoor dining if that's something that the restaurants want to do and kind of to serve to activate that, that streetscape a little bit. So, but not so big as to be like, you know, City Hall Plaza in Boston, which is pretty much the notorious list of what not to do with urban spaces, so...
Understood.
My only concern is that, that there, I see now, and now I've found the map, and it's missing a link of sidewalk between Continental Boulevard and the, the roundabout, if you will, along that northern boundary.
There, there is no sidewalk shown here.
Yes.
Uh, we can add a sidewalk there.
You can, without, okay, I'm happy then.
Yeah, I'd be glad to see a sidewalk there.
Because, I mean, really, you should have the ability for somebody to easily walk from, say, this area over to the hotel.
Yeah.
Just for an example.
Or possibly for people that live in the apartments and or visiting the hotel to have an area to run.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, you can run a loop.
And as, I, I know that the folks that live off of Camp Sergeant Boulevard haven't asked for or suggested it, but if I lived over there and you had a nice place to go to breakfast over here or something like that, being able to walk into your property and get over there without driving would be really appealing to me. I think that would be great. But apparently, so far at least, whoever lives there that thinks that way hasn't come and told us that, so...
And they may not think that way yet. They may think that way in the future, so...
Yeah, and there's, there's nothing to say that somebody's going to think that way, it just, there's no reason to believe that. Anyway, other comments or questions?
Just out of curiosity, is there parking along, or sidewalk along Industrial that gets up to the Premium Outlets Boulevard?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't, I just, I don't see that last piece there.
No, there is, there is parking, or there is sidewalk from here on Industrial Boulevard, up Premium Outlets Boulevard.
Yeah, but does it connect down?
There is no sidewalk here or here. And I would argue that headed east, there never will be sidewalk. The bridge isn't wide enough, the, you know, it, it's too far to go before you get somewhere. I mean, it's not...
Well, I would just think, especially with the apartments, it might be nice to be able to do that loop and, and whatnot, as a morning run or something like that.
There is, I mean, I'm showing a sidewalk connection from here over to Continental.
You are showing that?
Yeah.
They're going to build one, it doesn't exist today.
What?
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
I mean, here's, here's a plan you can see, so...
Okay, I couldn't see that up there.
Right. So, there is, there is in fact a loop.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Then I think that it's appropriate for the board to consider whether it's ready to take final action on this, and if so, who's prepared to articulate the things that we've added to the conditions? Or maybe Jillian can do that for us if you've been taking notes? Maybe? I know that we talked about the sidewalk along that northern access road between Continental Boulevard and your roundabout. We talked about bicycles, we talked about something that dealt with landscaping and lighting and outdoor activities that might disturb the neighbors, fire access roads. What else have we discussed that we wanted to sort of see, see incorporated into the plan? Phasing, that's always positive with that, with the economic analysis. Vinny?
I guess is, is there any diarrhea, are we looking to get the, see the conditional use permit approved tonight, or is it something that it can be written up, make sure it's been reviewed and then brought up at the next meeting and just pop it through?
Everything that we do delays their process because if they get a conditional use permit, they can start working on their development agreement, which can lead them sooner to getting to their site plan. So, if you want them to show you those documents, we can certainly vote that way and require them to do that. It's a month.
It's not documents, I'm just saying get this written down so that we don't forget anything here trying to do it on the fly. This is something that, would they be okay with, you know, next, at our next meeting, just...
Yeah, I mean, we're, we are kind of up against the gun with time.
Of course you are.
I mean, the agreement with the owner is that there be a closing that happens at some point in the, in the reasonably near future.
Is 14 days going to hurt you?
They won't get it done, Vinny, they won't get it done in 14 days because of the agenda closed.
Oh, we can't get it on the next agenda?
Yeah, no, it really does, plus the addition, I mean, you got to be sensitive to the, the costs to an applicant to come here with paid people to come explain to them.
I'm just trying to...
The closing, closing date...
No, I agree with your goal of not missing something, but...
The application date for the next meeting is tonight. So, if they haven't got it done by tonight, they can't go on the February the 7th, they got to go to February 21.
I think that it's certainly within our ability to be careful and think about and, or even leave open the opportunity to consider other things that we discussed and make some amendments.
Can we, can we do this? I mean, if, if you... I, I was just thinking that, that perhaps it's something that, you know, the board could vote on a sort of as discussed basis. Jillian can review the tape.
Yeah.
And sort of make sure that we've captured everything, but I, I mean, I think you've articulated, there wasn't that much.
Besides what Bob has already mentioned, I believe the things that have been discussed have captured in the conditions that are outlined in the memo. The only specification that I asked for was on the phasing for the development agreement, but besides that, everything else I believe is captured in the conditions.
I, I think the staff has done a good job. I really am sensitive to the applicant, having come here a couple of times and, and the difficulty that it takes to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant conditional final approval for the CUP subject to them supplying, providing staff with the extra information that we have asked for and which will subsequently be circulated to the members of this board.
And all the conditions and the stuff.
With all the conditions and everything else.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? Mr. Russo has the second for that motion. Is there questions or comments?
I have one quick question, just the clarification on the discussion we had on the waivers. We don't actually have to do formal waivers because we're just, we're reviewing the plan as they submitted, and then it's just assumed that...
Yeah, I think that was the advice that Jillian had given us, is that the normal process is that the setback and buffer waivers, the parking waiver, and the residential density waiver are incorporated in the fact that we've approved this concept that has those things on display.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep. Thank you.
And as long as everybody is satisfied with that approach. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you, thank you for providing a very detailed presentation and a lot of good answers to all of our questions, we really appreciate it. Item, number five on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. I don't have any particular items of concern, I would say you've all got a new regulation book in front of you. Please take it, use it, enjoy it. We've also, there was some communication from the NRPC.
Sorry, yep, there it is.
Tell me that one that you wanted to mention.
I just, I'm starting to get a little frustrated with the golf station on the corner of Greeley and, and whatever, and they're flashing open signs and, and things of that nature, which are a violation of our ordinances as I understand it. I don't know, I hate to get into signs and stuff like that, but...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, I would support what Tom is saying, every filling station in town is now breaching the regulations.
And was just thinking maybe we could ask community development to send them a letter just to remind them.
And I'll just note that we send lots of letters and they fix them for a time period and then they put them back out and then we send more letters.
So, maybe a letter just needs to be a photocopy or something, whatever, it just, it's, now they've got...
So, I mean, we do attempt to address it.
Now, they've got flags outside, which are also in violation of our sign ordinances and, and they just... and they just, they just keep encroaching further and further in that particular location, and maybe everybody is doing that. Gias isn't anymore, because they closed, but...
Every, every, if you go, Tom, if you sit, literally, if you come from Bedford down DW Highway, the number of these flag-wearing banner things is...
Well, those are, those have gotten crazy. I agree.
Absolutely crazy.
And even Boomer Audio has now got some along there.
Yeah, that's right. Everybody's got them. And the, the, the boomer places even got them at the exit.
Outside of their, yeah, outside of their...
Way away from their property, and that has been reported to Jillian and I.
They have assured me they're on their property, so we're sorting that out.
B A L L S, they're on DOT access line. So, anyway, but having fallen foul of a member of the town council who disagrees with me, sticking my ear in about signs, and you know who I'm talking about, I am not going to push signs anymore. I vow never to raise it again.
Well, I don't think it's necessary that you hold to that vow. If there's a property that signs or otherwise you think is in violation of something, report it to Jillian, and they'll do what they can. Doesn't always mean they're gonna, you know, run down there and, you know, knock the sign over or haul it out of the ground or something. But they do work on these things, and they're persistent, and they're not easy problems to solve, because if you go much further than the letter writing, you end up trying to impose some kind of a civil monetary penalty, and you get lawyers involved, and it spends more than it gets, and it becomes a little self-defeating, but...
I actually had a discussion with Alistair about this a few months back, and my guess is, is as much as we don't, maybe not crazy about those tall waving signs, if we give a little, and maybe put some limitations that we feel are reasonable versus, you know, five on a property, because they can, if you say, well, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, and, you know, if, if you give them some sort of leeway, where you say, hey, if you've got 100 feet, you got 150 feet of front, you can have two, or you can have one, or whatever I'm saying, just because if, because they're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you say, hey, you got four, can you take down one?
I don't disagree with you, and I wouldn't mind if the regulation said you couldn't have any. I think that some of our surrounding towns like Bedford have those rules. You just, they're, they're not allowed. Amherst, I think, is another one that just doesn't...
But enforcement, enforcement's the problem.
And enforcement is the problem, but beyond that, there's a little bit more of a background here that is sort of older than your involvement on the board. And so, I don't know, our sign regulations lengthy, I don't know, 10 pages, 12 pages, however many pages. And, and we go through the process of refining it and coming up with what one group thinks is the appropriate way to go, and then you gotta go to town council to get it approved with three readings and members of the public, and the economic development folks, and people that run businesses. And it gets mired down where everybody has got one or two sentences that they hate, and ultimately, that all adds up to not having enough support to get the votes that you need. Now, it's been a number of years since that flag has been run up the flagpole. I'm not particularly interested in being involved in another effort, but if you want to take that bull by the horns, by all means, you know, create a draft that you want the planning board to recommend to town council, and send it over to them.
54 Denny Webster Highway?
54 DW Highway. What's going on there?
Is it Skips?
Skips.
Oh, Skips. What?
I, I had a conversation with Robert Price. Have you talked to him about that?
Yes, he mentioned it briefly to me, and he's looking into it.
So, it's being looked into. All right. I wasn't really gonna bring it up, but I will bring it up.
You've done it. Tell us.
It's a tendency. There's somebody being, there's two businesses on that property.
Oh, it's Skips' property?
And it was not brought forward with regards to, oh, simple issue of parking that we were dealing with, and at this point, I kind of want to bring that, bring that to a head now, at, at the next meeting.
So, we're researching it to determine if that's indeed the case. So, it will be brought up at the next...
Excellent. Thank you.
So, but, but to clarify, if it is an issue, if he's doing that, and if he's not allowed to do that, and, and you do something about it, writing him a letter to enforcement and all that stuff, you might share that information with us as a matter of interest, but it's not a matter that this board takes up to decide people's violations.
Well, no, I'm not, and I don't, I'm not concerned about violations as far as that goes. My concern was, we were dealing with a simple parking issue over there, based on, all he does is store boats, and there's clearly a little bit more going on there with a necessity for probably a little more parking.
You're right.
Very good.
Absolutely right.
Does anyone else? Oh, the, this is the other item of concern that I was... National Regional Planning Commission has a 34th Annual Legislative Forum on February 8th at the Courtyard by Marriott in Nashua. There probably has been an email circulated to you all that said the same thing. If not, I can find my email that says that.
I read that today in the mail.
You got this today in the mail?
Yeah, Wednesday, February 8th, 6 to, 6 to 8 at the courtyard.
What time, what day? February 8th?
February 8th.
Thank you.
You want yours copied back, or can you have...
Yeah, I'll have mine copied back when you finish with it.
Take whatever information you want. I have no other items of concern to raise, if nobody else does. That would bring us to item six on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes of January 3rd, 2017. What is the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second with a condition, with one correction on page two, and line 24. Skip Moore said he receives four deliveries of one pallet of shrink wrap and antifreeze. There are no daily's, daily deliveries. I think he said it was four deliveries, did he say a week? I mean...
No, per year.
Per year. Oh, okay. See, it didn't say. So, that should be added in there, per year. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero to approve the minutes. That concludes our business on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Koenig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven, six, zero, zero, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.